Hyatt Place Hotel at Bay Street.
Good evening Chair Cardozo and members of the Commission. Before I start my presentation, I just want to make sure that all of you have this packet on your dials. So two of the first, two are comment letters that you received early in the week. One from Unite Here and the other one from the applicant. And the other two documents are memos from us, from staff to you. One talks about response to the Unite Here comment letter and the other one is, simply lists all the modifications to the conditions of approval. So with that, this is a brief outline of the staff presentation I'm going to make. I'll start with the background, followed by a project description, discuss the conformity to the PDP. I will go into the response to the Unite Here comment letter as this was received by you by email just a few hours before this meeting, environmental review, and then our recommendation. So in September of 99, the council approved what's called the South Bay Front Plant Unit Development, PUD/PDP. This approval included 250-room hotel and two retail pads which were not built as part of the Bay Street Residential and Retail Project. One of the retail pads, which was located in the south end, was built in 2009. I think a couple of you were here for the West Elm Furniture Store. And the second retail pad site at the northwest corner of Christie Avenue and Shellmount remains unbuilt, so this is an FDP for the hotel only. This kind of tells you where the site is. So here is your Bay Street Development. This is Bay Street. This is Shellmount. This is what we are talking about. This is the part of what, of the South Bay Front Development and the hotel is going to occupy this portion here. This is for the future retail pad that I just mentioned and of course, this is Site B, which has, which we're not talking about today at all. In terms of the operating characteristics of the hotel, it will be franchised as Hyatt Place brand. The Assembla Hotel Partners, which are the applicant, will franchise the Hyatt Place brand from Hyatt and then hire a management company to operate the hotel. The target population is business and leisure travelers in Emeryville and the surrounding market. It will be a 24/7 operation and actually, it's a 171-room hotel with meeting room, fitness room, indoor pool, and a bar and cafe area which would be open to everybody, not just the hotel residents. So this is the site plan. Shellmount is on the top, Christie Avenue, and this is Bay Street. And the Bay Street extension goes through the, runs across the site. If you recall at the study session, this was a turnaround, roundabout, sorry. And that has been revised to make it a straight shot and extension of the Bay Street. In terms of other site movement, it's pretty much the same. There are two entrances and egresses, one here and one, of course, here. There's onsite parking surrounding the hotel, that's about 40 to 41 spaces, and the remainder around 100, 110 spaces will be provided in the garage E of the Bay Street Development Complex. This zooms into the ground floor level plan. You may, you will notice that a number of changes have been made by the applicant in response to the comments they received at the study session. The main difference is there was a comment about making this area usable and this corner more attractive to the Bay Street and more active. So they have expanded the lobby café into, so that it makes a clear transition to the patio area. So the café and the patio area, like I'd mentioned before, will be open to both the residents, the guests of the hotel, as well as anybody else who wishes to get a drink or a coffee. Additionally, there used to be a meeting room along Christie Avenue that has been moved to the upper level and instead, instead of the meeting room, the fitness room has been relocated from the upper level to the ground level and the indoor pool right here is where it was in, at the time of the study session. The trash areas are going to be here. There's bicycle parking here as well as here and there's another landscape plan which shows this in greater detail. What you see in gray is the back, back of the house operations and this has more or less not changed.
Maru, I don't want to interrupt you, but you said the garbage area is over here in the southeast corner? I thought it was within the loading bay.
Well, this is the loading, yes. I'm sorry, yes, the trash is right here, did I?
Yes, okay.
Trash is right here and the loading dock is here. So this is the second floor plan, excuse me. The main difference, like I'd mentioned, the meeting room has been moved upstairs and there would be 31 rooms. The remainder floors are around 35 rooms per floor with a mix of different suite types. This is the landscape plan. Essentially what they are doing is they are going to be planting some street trees along the sidewalk. So this is the, this is Christie Avenue and right here is the Bay Street Extension. With some landscaping and stormwater planters at the various corners that you can see in dark at the bottom. There are more details regarding how this patio space will be designed. So these are the new elevations. The big change from the last time is this glazed triangular structure which is now being relocated so that it faces at that corner of Bay Street and Christie Avenue. They have also responded to the Commission comments regarding the suburban look of the hotel and includes a variety of vertical elements and they've done that by their window treatment. And also, they have reduced the number of materials that they were using and they are now restricted to plaster, which is right here, plaster, brick, metal, then you have the glass, of course, and then you again have plaster and you have brick. So this is the elevation, is the west elevation, so as you enter the hotel, if you're driving onto the Bay Street Extension, this is what you're going to see. The one at the bottom is what you would see if you are on Bay Street looking north. And before, and just one more thing, included in the proposal are also three large signs. So these are the two signs here, here, and then I'll show you, and the third large sign is at the back. And in addition to that, you have one small sign which is at the canopy right here. The signs are going to appear, these two are going to appear black during day and white during night and I will have renderings for that. But the one at the back side will remain black at all times. So this is the back elevation, face, this is the railroad track elevation. And this is the elevation facing north, which is basically what, if you are standing on the Site B property, this is what you're going to be seeing. So this, this is the third large sign that I'd mentioned which is going to stay, I'm sorry, did I say black? It's going to stay white at all times.
But white by lettering or white by lighting?
White by lettering, lettering, yeah. So this is the rendering by day and this is the rendering by night. So we did some photo simulations and I'm going to show you a bunch of before and after pictures in your packet. You do have photo sims as well. They might look a little different because they've been refined in the last few days in response to the latest drawings. But basically, there's not too much difference in what you're about to see and what you have in your packet. So this is from the Powell Bridge, looking at the site, and this is after. So this is what the terraces folks are going to be looking, at least a little portion of it, this way. This is if you're on Bay Street looking north and this is how the hotel is going to show. This is on Shellmount looking south and this is what it's going to look like. And this is Christie Avenue looking east. And that's where you have, then we also did another from across the tracks. So this is Hollis and Stanford and this is how it'll show up in that dimension. In addition to the photo simulations, we also did transportation analysis. This was done by Fear &amp; Pierce. Catherine Tellis of Fear &amp; Pierce is here if you have questions regarding the various analysis that they have done. The report was reviewed by staff, including the Public Works Director, and a number of recommendations in terms of conditions of approval have been set forth. So there were, there are some onsite recommendations which are kind of summarized in this figure in the transportation report. And then there are additional conditions of approval that I would like to point out which are specific to this project. And there are the conditions of approvals which are standard conditions of approval which I'm not going to get into, but only the ones which are specific to this project. So one involves restriping of the driving lanes on Christie Avenue between Shellmount and Bay Street. The second involves payment of $10,000 to install a video camera. And the third one is restriping of an existing crosswalk and a new crosswalk in conformance with state standards. These are three conditions which the applicant does not, as far as they've indicated, have an issue with these conditions. They do have some problems with the following conditions, however. This is regarding sidewalks. The first one talks about a 12-foot wide sidewalk between the hotel driveway and Shellmount Street. And the second one is widening the existing sidewalk on the south side of Christie Avenue between Shellmount and Bay Street by around three feet and also changes in the curb height. So, so basically what we are saying is that the sidewalk here, this is their Bay Street Extension, they are providing sidewalks here and around here, but they are not providing it from the Bay Street Extension to Shellmount. And the other one is, this is not the best diagram, but this is the south, the other side of Christie Avenue and we are recommending that this sidewalk be extended about by three feet. Now, the reason for doing this is essentially, I mean, it is basically to increase better pedestrian connectivity. Please recall that there is a bus, there's a bus stop on Shellmount. So if you are visiting, whether you are a resident here or, I mean, a guest here, or if you are enjoying the café patio area here, then if you want to leave the Bay Street complex, how are you going to go? You'll have to go back here, then back here, and then to Shellmount. So this allows for a better pedestrian connection to, to Shellmount and allows folks to connect if they're going to Marketplace or elsewhere. And that is the main reason. And this is essentially, we all know and we can see, what the sidewalk here looks like. It's pretty much nonexistent and there is no sidewalk here and the sidewalk on the south side is squished too. It's very narrow and there is a pinch point as well. So that is the reason we are asking for these infrastructure improvements. And we see this as being the part of the PUD/PDP. We see this as a project where, and not so much, we're not looking only at the hotel side. We see hotel side as being part of the larger Bay Street project. These are obligations that come with something like a PUD/PDP. We have to, please do not forget that the PUD and the PDP also gives them entitlements. This hotel was approved about 15 years ago and they are entitled to build it today and with this PDP, there is no time limit. They could very well come 50 years later and be able to build that hotel and the retail pad. So when there are obligations, they don't just come without rights, is what I'm trying to say. And, you know, I mean, this, for me, this is a very interesting issue because I see this issue come up in a lot of developing countries where individual commercial developments are only concerned about their site and not about the connectivity. And we don't want this to be a situation like that, that I see whenever I go home to India.
One more question, Maru, on that?
Yes.
Who owns, go back to that image of the sidewalk? Who owns that sidewalk where the pinch point is?
That is owned by Madison Market.
That is owned by Madison Market, okay.
And, you know, and you may hear about, I'm not sure, but you may hear that the Assembla may say that this is not our property, we don't control it, but we have to keep in mind that Assembla will have to, will have to cooperate with Madison to, in order for them to build the hotel as well as to operate the hotel. So the argument that we don't control the site doesn't really mean anything to me. And in terms of the PUD, it does not specify in terms of who is responsible for which portion. It is one master plan that is to be developed. So we do not get, we should not be, there's nothing that requires us to heed as to who builds who within this project, as long as it's built. The third condition that they may have, that they have expressed objection to is this, which is coming out of the traffic, the transportation report, is a requirement to monitor operations for all modes of travel at this Bay Street-Christie Avenue intersection and, and to make sure that before Site A Retail Pad or Site B is developed, further traffic assessment is done before any, any projects are approved at these two locations. In terms of consistency with approved PUD/PDP, in order to approve this FDP, the Commission must make the finding that the proposed FDP substantially conforms to the PDP. The approval was for 250-room hotel with a height up to 200 feet. The approval allows a residential unit to be substituted for a hotel room and vice versa. So during the construction of the residential component of Bay Street, 29 additional units were added thereby reducing the size of the hotel to 220, 221 rooms. And the proposed hotel is smaller than that, both in terms of number of rooms and much smaller in terms of height. The conditions, the PDP conditions of approval also allow for sharing of parking with retail users. Now we move on to the comment letter that we received from Unite Now. So they, they are making five points and I will go through each one of them. And all five of them are related, they cite the PDP conditions of approval to say that the PDP conditions of approval are not in compliance with the FDP for the hotel. And the first one is concerns, is concerned with the site security operations. They cite a PDP approval, a PDP condition that stipulates that the FDP for the hotel phase of the project shall include general site security operations for the exterior and interior areas, as well as the hotel personnel staffing, training standards, protocols, and coordination of the security personnel with the police department. The project was reviewed by the police department and the conditions of approval in FDP are included. And they talk about a requirement to submit a site security management plan. They do not specifically outline different things. However, things like training standards, personnel staffing, and protocols, these are what a site security management plan is. Nonetheless, staff is suggesting a modification mainly for clarification, which basically includes that language in the existing FDP condition. And the new language is in front of you, which has been underlined. The second issue is regarding the fire department requirements. Again, they say that the FDP conditions do not outline all the measures in the PDP conditions and they mention one specific one, a fire floor water line analysis. Again, the project was reviewed by Dalamita County Deputy Fire Marshal and he provided specific conditions. The fire marshal is also aware of the PDP condition of approval and has provided what he has provided that he deems relevant for the project that is being proposed. And these conditions were attached to the FDP conditions as an email. Again, in the interest of clarity and, I guess, in the interest of clarification, we are including what the fire marshal had outlined in an email that was attached to the FDP conditions inside the conditions. So all this new language is basically given by the fire marshal who believes that this is in compliance with what the project, what is necessary today and keeping in mind what the condition at the PDP was. The third one is regarding showing commitment and strategy for the TMA or the Transportation Management Association. The letter states that the applicant, the conditions of FDP do not adequately demonstrate an overall membership commitment and strategy. The FDP, the FDP conditions of approval requires two things. It first, it requires the applicant to enter into an executed membership agreement in accordance with the policies and rules of the TMA. And in addition to that, the second condition requires the applicant and its successors to remain a member of Emery Go Around as long as it exists. And it further requires the applicant and the future property owners to make good faith efforts to provide a brief description or tagline about Emery Go Around and other forms of alternative transportation in its marketing and advertising efforts. We believe that these conditions ensure that the applicant and its successors will maintain an overall membership commitment and strategy regarding the TMA. The fourth is regarding the acoustical analysis. Here, the letter cites two conditions. The first, two conditions in the PDP. The first one is that the FDP, the FDP, the hotel building plan submitted for the FDP shall include a specific acoustical analysis for the type of construction and design proposed. And the second condition that they cite is that the FDP submittal shall include a specific acoustical analysis to demonstrate recommendations for shielding outdoor use areas from roadway and rail users. And what the letter is contending is that the FDP conditions by deferring these acoustical analysis to the building permit stage, it precludes any changes that these, any conditions or mitigation measures that the acoustical analysis may have, may have implications on design. So it is, it is more appropriate to have that study done now rather than at the building permit stage. Our response to that is that the first PDP condition that they cite clearly says that the hotel building plan submitted for the FDP shall include a specific acoustical study and this is what is provided in the FDP condition of approval. The second PDP condition that they cite does state that the, at the FDP submittal stage, they need to provide a specific acoustical analysis to demonstrate that the recommendations are, are there to shield outdoor use areas from the road and the railroad. Now, the thing to note here is that the only proposed outdoor use area is the small café patio, area that at the corner of Christie Avenue and Bay Street Extension and this patio space is located on a street that is designed for such outdoor uses and is shielded by the hotel building from the railroad. The applicant has also submitted a letter from an acoustical expert and that letter states that, given the location of the outdoor use space, the hotel building provides an acoustical barrier from rail noise. The letter talks about the parking requirements at a certain amount of length. They talk, first of all, they make several comments or points. One is that the parking requirement for the hotel should be based on standards which were applicable at the time of approval of the PDP and which calculates to about 147 spaces. Second thing is that they questioned the feasibility of providing such a high proportion of parking as shared parking in the Bay Street Garage. The letter also contends that all of the hotel's parking needs should be provided in a structure as outlined in a PUD condition of approval. And the fourth is that it questions the traffic analysis prepared for the project suggesting that at the very least, there needs to be data indicating how much parking usage varies from day to day, including during peak shopping seasons. So staff does agree that the current parking requirement does, does not apply and the old calculation does, does apply and it does come to 141. So we are in agreement with that. The project-
147.
147, sorry. Okay, I can't see. So the, the project provides 41 spaces on the onsite parking lot that I had shown you earlier and they had earlier proposed to have 100 spaces in the Bay Street Garage. The traffic study analyzes the viability of shared parking, taking into account the average weekday peak and average week-end peak usages over a typical timeframe. And that typical timeframe would not be during a holiday season or special events as this would distort the average usage of the garage. And this is a standard methodology that is used by traffic engineers. And Catherine is here to talk more about that if you, if you do have questions regarding that. And one of the recommendations of the traffic report is to convert a parking space in the surface parking lot into a motorcycle space because of, basically where it's located and for the ease of easability, they are recommending that. And so that would reduce the total, the parking to 40. And so we, that leaves a shortfall of seven spaces. So they have 40 on, on the surface and 100 in the garage, so that equals 140 and the requirement is 147. To address this shortfall, the applicant has obtained the use of 10 additional parking spaces in the Bay Street Garage. And that letter from Madison is included in the packet that you have today. The other thing that the letter talked about is the requirement that they feel that all parking for the hotel should be provided in a structure. Now, at the time of approval of the PDP, the hotel and the residential components were tied together and this can be evidenced by the condition that permits the swapping of residential units with hotel rooms. The PDP conditions for both the residential component and the hotel, hotel component reference required structured parking. And to go on to say that such parking can be shared. This implies that the hotel parking is allowed to be in the existing residential parking structure. Furthermore, there is no condition that prohibits surface parking for any component of the Now, moving on, so that ends my response to the Unite Here comment letter. Now I'm moving on to do some of the modifications that staff is proposing. This is mainly to do with, to do with the suggested recommendations in the traffic report. And let me go on to this. So we have, we wanted to see a continuous sidewalk right here, which the report had not talked about in, in its earlier version. And we wanted to see that so that you have a continuous sidewalk and movement right till the property. So that's what it's talking about. So this figure 10 is revised and that is, and in order to incorporate this revision, we are suggesting-
So Maru, before you move on from that, that would be delineated by a surface treatment? It would, because it's still a driveway, correct?
Correct. So there would be a curb, yeah, yeah.
Well, no, it's not a driveway. It's a continuous sidewalk.
Your sidewalk.
All the way across. It'd have the same treatment as the sidewalk in front of the hotel has.
So how do they get into the parking lot behind?
There would be ramps on either side. There would be curb cut on either side of that driveway, just like-
Right, so it would be delineated by like a crosswalk or by treatment that would look like the sidewalk or how would it differ from the driveway's street?
It is a sidewalk that you drive over.
It wouldn't be, yeah.
Looks like you're going in your garage driveway.
Exactly.
The other revision that we are suggesting for the condition of approval is mainly for clarification purposes, that the height is measured to the top of the roof. So that's, that's not too much to that. In terms of environmental review, the final EIR, EIR report that was prepared for the project and certified by the city council in February of 99 still applies to the proposed action of the hotel. And since the adoption of EIR, there, we've seen no substantial changes to the circumstances under which the project is being undertaken and there's no new information that would trigger a subsequent EIR or an addendum to the EIR. So our recommendation is to open the public hearing, take testimony about the project, close the hearing, and consider the staff report and the resolution, as well as the two memos that were given to you today. And then pass the resolution approving the project with the conditions of approval attached. So that concludes my presentation. If there are any questions, I would be happy to answer.
I noticed that the access to the rear courtyard with the loading dock is located, required going through a fairly low- going through a fairly low entry on both sides. And I live very close to Trader Vic's Restaurant, and I see delivery trucks coming in delivering food, linen, things of that sort, and they would definitely be coming to this facility. And I don't think they will fit underneath either of these entryways to the rear yard, which then would mean they would have to park on the street in front of the building to load and unload their goods. And that doesn't look like it's been taken into consideration.
I'm going to ask Catherine Tellez to respond to that.
Good evening. I'm Catherine Tellez with Fair &amp; Peers. And so in looking at the loading dock issues, we really only looked at how they would navigate through the site, and unfortunately, we did not look at the, the vertical clearances. So perhaps the project architect could speak to that issue.
Does the applicant wish to speak?
Yeah, sure. I can answer that. Just to answer that first question, and then I'll introduce myself. I'm Conrad Garner with Ensemble Hotel Partners. But the, the clearance is actually set right now at between 16 and 16 and a half feet. So it's a tall first floor at 18 feet floor to floor to give ourselves plenty of room for the public space. We've actually been working with Public Works and with Waste Management and gotten to a point that their truck, the Waste Management truck, is able to drive underneath the building successfully, access the service yard, and then drive out. So we're anticipating that the rest of the trucks, for any kind of deliveries, would be able to do the same.
Maru, I just have a quick question on looking at plans. You have this one up here, and again, we're looking, I'm speaking of the, that would be the southwest corner, where kind of that stairwell exit. There's two different versions of this. There's, they show two storage rooms here, and then later in the plans, those storage rooms are gone, and the generators are outside, and the bike parking is outside. I need to know which, which one is current, and-- So if you go to the Plan L, the landscape plan, L 1.0, you'll see a totally different arrangement for that part of the building. And I don't know which one we're actually talking about.
The L and this?
Correct, correct. So look at that southeast corner of the building where the stairway is. On the first plan, you see some storage rooms.
Correct.
On the landscape plan, those are gone. And there's like a landscaped area, and so are we proposing the landscape plan, or are we proposing the one with the storage rooms? Does that make a difference for the bike parking and et cetera?
Right. I believe it, we would be going with this. Can you confirm?
Yes.
Okay.
Because typically what happens is the landscape plan is--
Well, this, this shows--
By somebody else.
This, this reappears elsewhere. If you go to C 2.0, you'll also see that that doesn't show two spec, two specific rooms there. So there's some changes in the plan. I don't know which one we're talking about.
As far, in terms of the flow plan, the flow plan, this would be valid. In terms of the landscape and the C 3, we would look at the landscaping items on that landscape plan and not the, the flow plans.
Well, I'm just concerned because several plans, I'm looking at C 2.0 and C 3.0, and those rooms are gone. They're not there. And if you also look at some of the elevations, it looks like there's a cut opening there as well. So are the storage rooms going to be there?
I think I'm going to let them answer, since we've been having a lot of plans here.
Yeah. There is, the site plan in A 1.1 is what we're pursuing for the building design. The landscape plan and the civil plan, which is represented on the C sheets, is admittedly one, one version before this where those draw, those two rooms were not incorporated. On the landscape plan, the effect would not be very significant. It would be sitting within the range of that landscape patio area. And the bike parking stays in generally the same location, Commissioner Keller. It's, it moves slightly to in front of the stairwell. And then the, the two storage rooms are located there. Right now, those are drawn as blank rooms. You'll notice we didn't even label it. It's just trying to find storage and talking to operations. They were looking for additional storage, and we did include them on the A sheets and not, not the others.
For me, it just leads to upcoming conversation about the bike storage insecurity.
Okay.
So that's good to know. I just need to know which ones we're going to be talking about.
Yeah, A 1.1 would drive it.
Very good, thank you.
And also, in terms of C 4.0, just want to make sure that the stormwater catchment area is sufficient, because that may change too.
That would remain the same, because our, our rooms are under the envelope of the building. I believe, let me just, A 1.1 back and forth. Yeah, do you see the, do you mind if I just walk up and show you? Is it easy?
You can put it right on the overhead there, and we can all see it.
Okay, I can just, perfect. These are the two rooms in question, right?
We need a microphone. Can you?
Does it work? Okay. I'll speak up. These are the two rooms in question, and you'll see that they fall on the column lines here. And if we go back to 40, all of the retention area is outside of the column line.
Right, okay.
So it won't affect that.
Maru, the, I just have a couple of questions. The photo simulations in, in our packet, were those done to reinforce the analysis and the EIR, or they were just done for illustrative purposes?
They were done for illustrative purposes. We tend to do that, even if you recall the Mass project that we did on San Pablo. We did photo simulations for that. I think it gives us a better idea of what the project is, looks like.
Great, thanks. And then my other question is the, the, we got an email with some changes to the, some proposed changes to the conditions of approval. And there was one regarding the condition, regarding the height of the building. And I was just, I was curious sort of about the need for that condition at all, given, I, I think I may have answered this question, but I was curious about the need for that condition at all, given that the, one of the very first conditions is basically kind of as per plans. But I, I think that might be because the plans, I was just flipping through the plans, and I didn't see that, that 75-foot height actually called out anywhere. I mean, obviously, the plans are to scale, but is that--
I mean, you know, 73 feet and 10 inches, things happen during construction. If it goes a little bit above, you know, a couple of feet, they don't want to, you know, I mean, it's just to give them a little leeway, because the height that that building can be is 200 feet. So it's just to give a little room. Is that the question, or why we have that condition in the first place?
Yeah, that, that addresses my question.
Okay.
Yeah, thanks.
I just have a question about the, now that the turnaround is no longer there, it's just showing the, the, like Bay Street basically ending at what would presumably be a fence or something. Are there any temporary plans for landscaping or something that would soften that, that, that dead end?
No, there are no plans, and there are no conditions addressing that either, but the commission is welcome to propose any condition.
Are there any more questions from Maru?
Yeah, actually, I had a, kind of a last minute question. So we're not, tonight, we're not going to be talking about the easement. That's coming up in a future item on the agenda, but the plans are currently showing what the proposed revisions are to the easement, or not.
You mean, yes. The answer is yes. Simple answer is yes, yeah.
However, the hotel has been designed to work even if the easement is not moved. So it's not contingent upon the moving of the easement.
Any further questions from Maru? Does the applicant wish to speak?
Is that all of them? Should we grab the-- Good evening, commissioners. My name is Conrad Garner with Ensemble Hotel Partners. I'm here today with fellow colleagues, as well as the project architect, Gene Kong. And I'm, I'm going to give an introduction to the project, and then we'll all be available to answer questions about design or whatever may come about. First off, I just wanted to say, we're really excited to be back in front of the commission. We've been looking forward to this date. We're also excited and pleased to announce that we have agreed to work toward a card check neutrality agreement with Unite Here, which is the local hotel employee union. And we understand there have been some contentious labor disputes and issues within the city of Emeryville historically, and we're, we're very much looking forward to not being a part of that and to working with the union and having a good relationship here forward. So with that being said, I also want to tell you how much we think we've heard your comments, heard the community's comments, worked collectively with staff, our own internal design sessions, and come up with what we're very proud of and very excited to be back in front of you for a vote on this new hotel. We think this hotel has the potential to become the best hotel in Emeryville, highest level of design. Ensemble prides itself on how hotel, our hotels operate, and we want to carry that excellence all the way through. So I will go through a quick slide. Maru actually covered quite a bit of things I thought I might have to, so I will, I'll move a little bit quicker. But this is, again, this is the rendering of the new building. It looks quite a bit different than what it was when we were here back in January. This is the night shot. It's important to do both, study both with how signage, with how lighting, with how everything works. We certainly did that here to see how it would affect. So, design is obviously an evolutionary process, and just to take a, a quick glance back on what we've gone through, we've been busy. We met with you in January and received what we felt was very constructive and actionable feedback and criticism and critique. That, that gave us a direction. We came out of that meeting and had subsequent meetings with city staff, with the design architect the city brings on for consulting. We've met multiple times with Hyatt. They're very excited about this project. We have pushed the envelope in a few areas and took a little arm wrestling, but they came along to understand that Emeryville is not just anywhere on the map. It's a special city, and we have a special site in the context of Bay Street and the like. And we actually had Hyatt's ANC manager out here, meeting with Gene and myself, so he can understand the context, and we're not designing in a vacuum. So with all of that, those sources of input, we've had significant design refinement to a hotel that you see in front of you today that hopefully you'll agree is, is, is one that fits within the Emeryville context. Site plan, one of the things that we talked about early on was our urban siting of the project. We don't have a field of cars in front of the hotel on the public front. We have the hotel, and we've put the cars on the back, 40, 40 to 41 spaces, with the remaining being shared. We've maintained that site organization. That was something we thought the commission was supportive of originally, and we felt worked best for the site. We have worked with Madison on refining the easement extension, and this current design is optimal. We've looked at a variety of, last time we had the bulb, and that had issues with how you load and stack cars and how you get check-in and checkout process to work. So collectively, we've landed on this, which is a straight shot through. And our hotel Portica Shear entry peels off on a more traditional curb cut. The trash in the service yard is on the back, in the back of the, back of house zone. The gray again is the service areas. Circulation is two curb cuts. That was one of the questions. We were waiting to see if the traffic and consult, or, and transportation assessment had any issues. They were on board with the two, two exits, thought it gave means of ingress and egress. So we've maintained the site pretty much as you saw it last. Excuse me, whoa, too fast. Ground floor. She already pointed out, we, we really heard you on the, on the corner, and that was a big driver for us, to get that patio activated--
Okay.
--to get it to be, you know, the center point of this lobby experience. I know if I'm coming into the hotel, I would want to grab my food and eat on, on that active corner. To do that, we moved the meeting rooms upstairs. We pushed the, this wall back. We brought down a more public function of the fitness center, and actually has a nice adjacency to the pool that we're pleased with. And we introduced an extra door here, which further provides access, direct access on the path that you would take into the retail center, and will bring that traffic in and around this, this zone. Upstairs, the typical floor remained, remained close to the same. As far as 35 rooms, we had quite a bit of change in the corner to achieve our glass wedge and that glass element. We also made a move here in which we flipped the elevator lobby in the orientation so that the, the closet, if you will, the housekeeping closet and storage zone is dark with no windows, but the elevator lobby now has a nice daylight on every floor. We just did that on another hotel. It's got a great effect of lightening up the core. As you're walking toward it, it brings that natural light in. So we're pleased with that. I wanted to show you this slide, because we do have a low roof right in this area. And we're, we're really proud, you know, it's funny, building, buildings, you, you build the whole building, and then it's how you solve one little piece that makes you pretty excited. This is a roof product, and we're going to plan to use this again, because we don't want to look down at ugly roofs. And this was a simple installation. It's a plastic system that sits on top of the TPO, doesn't compromise any kind of roofing warranty, and you can pattern it and make it interesting. And this was our plan on the low roof at the Hyatt place. No, no, no mechanical equipment. We will decorate it. So the design elements we came away focused on from January, if we had to boil them down into four, we're balancing horizontal and vertical elements within the building, better organizing and simplifying our forms, looking at the quality of materials proposed, and creating the active corner patio. So I want to walk through those four, just to show you how we've responded. And just take a drink here. So, being six stories, you're sort of in this gray area of vertical and not vertical, if you call it horizontal. But we spent a fair, quite a bit of time looking at how to introduce more vertical elements and how to balance our horizontal pieces. So one of them is obviously the biggest move, being the glass wedge. We brought the wedge that used to be mid-block to the building to the corner to express the verticality of it. That parapet piece goes well over the 75 feet above the other parapets. It will have a very pronounced statement. That wedge is created out of a, an edge of glass. That will be a curtain wall that passes in front of the slabs, floor slabs, and creates a very urban, very crisp edge with a very pronounced vertical line running up. We also spent a lot of time looking at the windows and how the windows were stylized and how they were organized. We have a window system that you can see in this highlight with only a vertical mullion. And that take away, takes away a horizontal line in the building. We're orienting the rest of our divide in the metal panels and other screeds to line up on a more vertical line. This, this window is custom. This is not Hyatt's typical window. It's actually larger, so you have more daylight in each guest room. And with the window is an integral architectural metal louvered panel, I'll call it. And that is a system that works with the aluminum window. Each one, it may be hard to read on some of the renderings, but each one will be painted out to match whatever building material it sits upon. So the metal panel will be painted to match the metal panel, and the, the metal panel will be painted to match the brick on the other facades. Organization of forms, simplicity, we heard quite a bit, and we agreed. So we put a primary emphasis at the corner and allowed other-- So we put a primary emphasis at the corner and allowed other things to rotate out from that. From the corner, I'm looking at the front facade, you have two large masses of metal panel, followed by two areas of brick, followed by a small piece of end cap, if you will, of plaster. That plaster rotates back around to the backside, in which we again introduce brick as well as metal panel in the center, and have organized them into a more understandable pattern. The building undulates based on rooms. You know, the rooms where you have two beds, the queen queen rooms, we call them, pop out a little bit farther. So we have undulation and play with color and with form that fits with the use of the building. Material quality. We've expanded our horizon on quality in a significant way on this project. This is not going to be a plaster box, not even close, which we'll set it aside from some of the other hotels in the near neighborhood. So we have three primary materials and glass, but the other primary would be metal panel, brick, and smooth plaster. The metal panel is used in three different colors, but in an organized fashion. The primary panel used up on the building is a champagne color or a cashmere pearl, if you will. It will play in the light a little bit. It is not a gray, it's not a white. It plays between the two, and we think that's interesting. We're also using white and gray to define podium edge for the Port of Kishir, as well as a small cover over that new entrance that we introduced at the corner. The brick is... We've got kind of three samples here, just to highlight. This is scale, the size of the brick we'd like to use. This is in the family of color, and this is in the family of texture. We don't want a smooth brick that looks like it was bought at Ikea. Brick's one of those materials that has a great natural...
Not quite that texture.
...quality to it, and that's what we're trying to mimic. And brick is obviously in the vernacular of Emeryville in a lot of different forms. So we'll be in good company. Even down Bay Street, walking it, you'll see brick facades, as well as some metal panel facades and the like. On the glass, the, if you'll call them punch windows, the guest room windows, the typical guest room windows will be vision glass, which is basically clear. The wedge is going to be tinted, a blue, bluish tint, to give it presence and to differentiate it and to allow those floor slabs behind to disappear during the day. And then you get that sheet running all the way down. Those same materials are then again used on the back. Yeah, I think we're good. Oh, and this material, I'm sorry, I forgot one material here. This is called Swiss Pearl. It's a composite material. We're using it as an accent. It's picked up, and this is hard to see, it's better looking here maybe. You can see some of the orange here. We're using it as lattice and some penetration on the walls of the building to give depth. It seems to be an indestructible material when you read the language about it.
So it pretty much runs along the podium on the front two facades?
Correct. That's right. Yep. It doesn't travel up higher than the podium. So again, on the back, using the same set of materials. The elevator core here that has the natural light is all going to be metal panel, smooth plaster, brick element, brick element. And then the ground floor is all brick with detailing with the other materials, but there's no plaster on the ground floor. It's all brick. The corner patio, just to focus on this area. You know, this is going to be a zone where, as I think it was mentioned before, anybody can enjoy this patio. It's a space for the guests of the hotel. It's a space for passerby's or meetings to happen. It's a really interesting spot. As soon as we got into this site, one of the first things we located was this patio, and how can we get an outdoor space that functions here? We have worked to try to bring this tall patio space down to a human scale and create a comfortable area. That's done by introducing brick in that area, making it a bit larger. Also, we have a lot of visibility in this area with a low landscaped wall and a railing rather than a 30 or 36 foot, 36 inch plaster wall. So in order to achieve the corner patio, we relocated the interior dining to that area. We moved the meeting room, as I'd already mentioned. We added the entrance. We're going to have a well-appointed patio with nice finishes, and it just relates really well to the dynamic retail street front. And hopefully, across the way, in not-too-distant future, we'll have more retail or restaurant or food or beverage, and the play between the two can be very nice. So this is a zoom in, just to show you again where we moved more dining over here and how the patio works in the overall. The Port of Kishir element flies out to pick up in one smooth move, so it's all at the same height, all clad in the gray metal panel, and it provides cover over the patio with the similar Swiss Pearl product. This is the new set of doors. This is the small cover over those doors that works with the curved piece over the patio. This is another shot, looking at it from a different angle. This is a floor plan. Plenty of dining, envisioning two fire pits, landscaping. These are, this is the flavor of finish in terms of the high-quality outdoor tile or composite material, long-lasting. And we also think it may be an area in which we can showcase some of our public art. Our landscape plan will follow the bay-friendly menu of best practices and plant selections, just to give a flavor of the landscaping we're working with. We're talking about using flax and kangaroo paw in some of the retention areas and beds. There is a sound attenuation wall along the eastern edge, in which we want to basically cover with an ivy. Our landscape architect has recommended cat claw ivy right now, and we'll work with the street trees requirement on the public sidewalk. This is a study we put together, just putting our building in context with our immediate neighbor in Bay Street. This is the gap, and we have apartments up above. So you can see how we relate in terms of height to a large degree. And we actually relate a fair amount in the podium heights, tying the two together. So this was just an exhibit that we used to help study some of the architectural moves and wanted to share it. We have given thought to public art. We have some ideas of where we would implement that. One, as I said, would be a mosaic in the patio. We're also working on, it could be a sculpture or painting in the lobby. Hyatt Place has an art program throughout the corridors and the guest rooms and the public space, in which the owners do get input, and we could direct that to a local artist as another avenue. Our hotel parking, again, it was already brought up, 40 to 41 onsite, 110 offsite, all access through the existing system of control that's there. Last little bit here on the design, just to refresh on the brand, just wanted to show you again the rooms of what's going on inside, just as a point of reference. It's a good room. Hyatt spends a lot of time coming in with new designs and contemporary feel. This is the design package we would be implementing as the franchisee. So again, a night shot. And then to talk about the conditions of approval. Maru gave an update on a letter we had sent in challenging some of the conditions. And we're going to rescind our first challenge on the sidewalk at Site A Retail Pad, and we'll agree to build out that sidewalk from Chris, from the Bay Street extension to Shell Mount. That makes sense. We will get that done. On the South Christie Avenue sidewalk piece, we've looked at that again and spent some time on the condition. I just had a couple of pictures. We agree there's a pinch there. We do struggle a little bit to find the nexus between our new hotel a block over and across the street and fixing this, but we do think it should be fixed. We would ask the Commission to consider revising the condition to focus on what may be causing the pinch, and we think it's this street lamp. And if, rather than move this entire sidewalk out three feet, could we look at relocating this street lamp into this bed or down in this area, or maybe it goes up in this zone? Obviously, still needing to require the public safety amount of lighting in that area, but it seems that we can solve this pinch by just relocating that rather than widening. We get concerned when we see utility boxes and storm drain outlets and everything that goes into making this wider, along with just compressing Christie Avenue, that we're going to be restriping, just making it smaller. So we'd like you to consider that as an amendment to the condition, another way to fix that. And then on the monitoring, there's a condition that, whoops, there's a condition already that we pay a fee, $10,000, to install a camera viewing the Shellman and Christie intersection. We were agreeing to do that, but we struggle with how we would monitor the traffic at Christie and Bay. Right now, the traffic report really says that they don't think a four-way stop is the right way to go, and they don't think a signal is the right way to go, because they both have impacts, one on the parking, one on queuing down Shellmount. But with monitoring it, we just don't know what that really means. How do we monitor? How do we report? Who acts upon it? It's kind of ambiguous, and we get concerned about our responsibility in providing data that could be used to assist or to work with future developments. So maybe there's another way that that could be monitored long-term. So with that, I'll leave you on this picture, and myself or any of our group here are certainly open to answer questions.
I have some questions. I just want to clarify on the drawings. So you mentioned that you swap the, one of the storage areas for, by shifting, to accommodate shifting the elevator lobby over to allow glass. Okay. So does that occur, starting at level two? Because on A21, it looks like it doesn't, but on the elevation drawing, it looks like it does. So does it start at level two or level three?
Starts at level two, that's correct.
Okay.
All the guest room floors.
Okay, okay, good. And the other question I had, again, on the same plan, we'll go back, well, this plan will work, floors two through six, actually. On the south elevation and then the east elevation, those walls are blank? There are no windows?
This wall here.
Okay.
Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, that's a question.
Majority is blank, yeah, and that's to help with acoustical mitigation. We are looking to see if we can introduce a small window.
Okay. And then on the south wing, or the wing that's facing, excuse me, north?
This guy.
Yeah. Same question.
Same treatment, yes. It would be a small window in each corridor, and the rest of it is plaster.
Okay, and that also starts at level two?
Correct.
Okay. Currently, the drawing for two does not show that, so I just want to make sure that those windows aren't shown on level two.
Unless the glass gets compressed, it looks like a solid line.
Excuse me, you need a microphone. There's a wireless one up there, somewhere? You have to make sure it's on.
Okay, that's okay. I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page.
We are. It's really hard, he's right, it shrinks down to almost nothing, but the idea is two through six, at each of those areas you've located, there will be a window on an overall wall.
Okay. And the tops of the roof on, say, well, the page A4.13, those are metal as well?
Did you say 4.1?
Yeah, A4.13. The metal wrap, it's continuous metal overhang canopy? This one?
Oh, 413, sorry. Okay, got it. Yes. The metal would wrap the fascia.
And on top as well?
Well, it would return, and we would have to curb it, and this would have to be a real roof. It's shown as a solid mass right now, but the way the detail would work is we would return the metal to a curb and then have a TPO roof and put that application I was talking about on top of there.
With the different colored?
With the different colored patterns, yeah. But that would need to be a roof element, unfortunately.
Different pattern, yeah, pattern, got it. Okay.
On the stormwater control plan, it looks like there is some treatment that's happening actually off of the site, just like on the retail pad site?
Right.
So is it envisioned that when that retail pad develops, that that would become part of a larger landscape strip along, next to the curb?
In my dealings with BKF, yes. That is the idea, is that that would work into some sort of landscape strip there in the sidewalk. Either, there may be some retention and some landscape showing, but it was, the idea was to, rather than create two separate areas, one for the expansion and one for this Port of Kishir Drive, the civil engineer was recommending they grab all that water and take it to one location and flow it that way. And that would need to be incorporated to a sidewalk plan in the future.
Okay.
I had also a question, a landscape question. On page A4.0, which is an exterior view, it's showing a very nice landscape buffer between the streets and the sidewalk, but on the landscape plan, I just don't see that. And there are benches and trash receptacle, but no landscape. Are we going to get our landscape? No, we want it.
The buffer and the trees.
It's on all the, it's on all the elevations.
There was a question, Maru, I can't remember if Sean reached out on that, or the landscape did, but there was some question between us and the city on what exactly the requirements were for the tree wells and the landscaping buffer. We had first interpreted it as a continuous buffer, and then the landscape architect interpreted it as only tree wells and the benches. So we will confirm that and get it in per whatever the city requirement is for the street landscaping there. Either would work.
Okay.
So we could make the requirement for a planting strip if that was?
Yes, yeah. We could, that would definitely fit. It's a 12-foot sidewalk. That was one other thing I wanted to mention.
It's plenty of room.
This is a 12-foot sidewalk all the way around.
And 12 feet is hardly needed on that south side of the building.
So would like a one-foot planter bed suit your needs?
Better than nothing.
And how about where the benches are? Would there be landscaping there? Would that be hardscape for the benches?
That can be done. You can have a bench and landscape, it's just lower there, and the bench is sort of hovering.
I have a question for the architects. The, that Swiss material that you showed us, I'm curious about it, actually. I really, I like the concept that you're showing here as far as the application of that. I really would prefer that to be, I really would prefer that material to have, to look more like wood, to have the warmth of wood, and I'm curious if you know of a material that could be used in that application that would have more of those qualities?
We did consider a natural wood like E-Pay, okay? The reason we picked Swiss Pearl, the composite panel, you could actually bend it to create that curve. So that's material that's, has a long longevity to the material versus having a natural wood, okay? But if we were to look at it again, I mean, the natural wood, certainly was a consideration we had earlier.
Excuse me, Gene. The microphone is not on. Needs to be fixed.
I think you should probably use the mic. So is there a way to do it with natural wood, where you could get that curve?
Yes, yes, there is. It was one of our earlier consideration. Okay. We just thought that the Swiss Pearl was a unique material composite. It gives it that wood-like effect, and we could actually make it more intense in terms of the color. But if we want to go back, we can certainly use a hard-type wood like E-Pay or Magalas that will give you that long-lasting durability that we're looking for.
In terms of durability, over years, how long would an E-Pay and a finish last enough before we notice noticeable wear as compared to the Swiss product?
Well, that was one of our consideration, that through the years, that will age. You know, it lasts a lot longer than natural wood, like cedar and redwood. The E-Pay is a much harder wood, and it just, its age is darker, and it does require...
So it wouldn't need to finish like 15 years down the road? It wouldn't need to be refinished?
Probably after a while, it becomes so dark that you need to paint it?
It depends, it depends.
Like most wood, you have to... Like most wood, you have to-
It depends on how you-
Because it's a western exposure is the thing I'm thinking. It's a western exposure.
It needs to be, it needs to be sealed and treated first in order for, in order to guarantee the success of an epay.
Absolutely.
And the example I'm thinking of is the Cathedral of Christ the Light. There's a lot of epay there, and we saw examples where we didn't seal it to begin with, and it really just, before we were done with the project, there were problems with it. So we learned, that was a lesson learned for us, is it needs to be sealed right off in order to keep that color that everyone likes.
I see Commissioner Massa's statement about that, the wood thing, and I can see that it would warm up, and it works in a contemporary setting. Personally, I like the uniformity and the cleanness without breaking up another, adding yet another element of finish, and I'm just concerned about being a western-facing wood, what does it do 50 years from now compared to the look? And does it look worn, and does it kind of make the building look tired?
Well, the silver metal is how it goes with the window frames and all that, provides sort of a level of continuity, too.
Could you point again to the Swiss pearl that you were talking about? Because, okay, and that's being proposed?
There are references in this color, Jean.
Oh, yeah, it is.
Yeah, I'm familiar with the product. We also use that on the Cathedral, so it's very durable, but I'm just trying to refresh my memory on the reasons why it was an outdoor application, and that's why we, why that material was selected. But it does come in different colors. Okay, and that's proposed at the, sort of these fence elements? Is that where that's being proposed? I missed that.
It's, it's all of this kind of horizontal elements on the podium.
Okay, that look like wood, but, okay, understand, thanks.
I saw one rendering of the rear where it looked like there was a fence, but it, that goes around the back. I was alluding to that, but it didn't really, wasn't really clear what that material was. Could you let us know what the fencing is intended to be around the rear?
Yes.
Oh, did we put a condition about that?
I'll hold it.
Well, we, yeah, and we made it a little translucent so we could see behind it in this, in this rendering, but the concept is this would be a CMU wall with landscaping planted upon it.
Through, through the chair, I'd just like to make a clarification. That is what they are showing. However, we, there's a condition of approval that requires this fence to be a wrought iron fence of six feet. This is skin keeping up with the fence further down.
One of the, yeah, that was, exactly. It is, we were putting it there a little bit for sound attenuation, and the wrought iron's not going to do much for that. It was more for that than any security on that side. We would, we would rather have a CMU wall at the base and plant upon it to turn it into a green wall than the wrought iron, which gives us zero sound attenuation along that side.
So is this a point for the commission to decide?
Yeah, I mean, I'd suggest that after you hold the public hearing and take public testimony and close the hearing, and then bring it back for your deliberation, that you could decide what kind of fence you want to have there.
Do we have any further questions for the applicant?
Thank you. Okay, thank you.
That's true, that's true. It'd be better to take them down, I think, yeah.
You guys want these up for the deliberation, or should we take them?
You could just put the one up on the screen?
Yeah, sure.
We're now up in the meeting of the public. So any members of the public would like to speak? Please, give us your name and sign in afterwards. You have three minutes to speak.
Yep. My name is Pedro Farish Vandy. I'm a resident.
Can you get this?
Is it better? I'm a resident. My first concern is about the height. I know the height is called to the roof, but it seems that there are some high parapets, especially at the glass. It seems that like it's over 12 feet after that 75 feet. I just want to confirm that. The other thing is, I want to know where the mechanical equipment's going to go, if it's on the roof, is it going to be screened or not? The other, other concern is if there is enough landscape for stormwater management. That's it. Thank you.
Would you please sign in over there?
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Bobby Lee, homeowner on Bay Street condo development, and I apologize I'm going to go pretty fast because I have a number of comments I want to make. First is around design. I think there's been a lot of great progress made, but in the last study session, one of the commissioners mentioned that we don't want to see a bunch of closed curtains in that glass tower. And if you look on page 12 of the photo simulation, we, there is potential for still a lot of closed curtains. The view from the pedestrian line of sight from Bay Street shows basically flat glass, double doors, awning with chairs and shaded patio, and a railing. There's really nothing visually stimulating coming from the retail side, and even coming approaching from the Christie side as well. If Bay Street is to be really a retail dining and entertainment destination, this hotel has to work in context to complement that, that sort of fun atmosphere. And you only have to look at L.A. Live, for example, in Southern California, for a good example of that. So I, I just wanted to propose a couple of solutions, including adding more artwork behind the glass on each floor, adding a sculpture maybe on the ground floor, or even having colored LED lights illuminate the glass tower in its entirety. There's nothing like in Emeryville right now, having a signature light statement would be really cool. And in fact, you know, I, I would like to be able to look out of my balcony and see a glass tower that, that is, is cool, something I can show to friends and say, like, this is really interesting. And, and there's a lot of potential with that glass tower that, right now, it doesn't function as a great representation of what it could be, which is an iconic ending to Bay Street and a warm welcome to Emeryville. Second concern is around traffic around the Christie Avenue-Schelmund intersection, as indicated in the, in the traffic study. I know, I understand the Public Works Director is here as well. With all the near-term building projects in place on a bike lane installed on Christie, many of the roadway striping options laid out in the traffic study will lead to some delay or significant delays. And it's unacceptable, because right now, the delays are, there are a lot of delays already. We don't want to continue to add to that. If we are modifying the intersection already for this project, we should look at longer-term solutions. As a resident, so far, I observed, you know, and this, this is the, this is the Schelmund-Christie intersection, excuse me, and this is the Bay Street entrance. You know, I've seen many illegal turns in all directions. I've seen the use of that outside right lane to go straight into Bay Street, and I've seen, you know, illegal turn, legal turns that aren't made. A lot of folks stop in that right turn lane and don't proceed, even though they can, and all leads to really a lot of backups. So I wanted to encourage the commission to address these issues now while we can, also the Public Works Department as well, to pay particular attention to the issues. Two, just two minor notes as well. Right now, I understand Madison Market has a policy to have the delivery trucks double park on Christie to make deliveries. I want to make sure that these trucks don't get moved back on a Bay Street where they can cause noise issues. And the second and last thing is that South Christie sidewalk, the pinch point isn't necessarily the light pole, it's the corner of that building. So that sidewalk has really got to be expanded. Right now, it's a single file line through that area. Thank you.
Do you sign in? Do we have any further members of the public would like to speak on this? The public meeting section closed.
You gonna start with me again? I have something to say about the, the trip generation and everything, and it's going to kind of be a long diatribe, but I really need to get some understanding, so I'm going to ask Farron Pierce to, to come up and ask. And I know we're probably looking at industry standards and guidebooks and et cetera, but I'm looking at a thing that says that this project is going to generate 1,520 daily trips. Okay, we're looking at a hotel, so I'm going to give you a scenario. We're looking at a hotel that has 171 rooms. If the hotel is lucky, and they have filled every room last night at 171 capacity, and they're lucky again today, they're going to have another 171 keys checked out, we're going to look at a total of 342 entrances into the unit. If all their employees show up for work that day, none of them have a day off or on vacation or sick, they're going to have about 50 employees there. And that brings us up to 392 people, or trips into the thing. The meeting room, according to the Fire Marshal that I talked to, should only have about 80, 48 people in it. I bumped that up to 50, and then adding the tables in the restaurant, if they were all full, and maybe it took two trips to get those people there at each table, we're looking at about 56 different things. So I'm looking at a max total of 498 people. Where did the other 1,022 come from, and where are they going?
Well, you're correct in noting that we're using sort of ITE standard trip generation rates that are based on a studies of, you know, a lot of different hotels that all have very different characteristics. We don't know the size of the meeting rooms in those locations, the size of the restroom, or the restaurants in those locations. So there's a lot of different variables that go into play. With this assessment, though, we're not actually using the daily trip generation for any of the analysis or any of our conclusions. I don't know if that makes you feel any better about it, but-
It just makes me think that we have overestimated, so I think we're going to be fine.
Yes, and in terms of the, the peak hour trips being sort of overestimated by using these sort of standard trip generation rates based on, you know, United Stateswide surveys that were done, you know, 10, 20, even 30 years ago, that's why we're sort of now taking a lot of these adjustments, understanding that this is not a suburban site. People will not be all driving. Have some people that would like to take trains, and some people that might like to walk, some people that might choose to stay here because it's, you know, very close to other places that they can walk to or ride their bicycles to.
So what I wanted to get is that we were just clearly overstating the amount, and that we probably will not see 1,500 daily trips into the building, correct?
Correct. And we, you know, after we subtracted for all those discounts, it's only 990, but even that may be an overstatement.
Like double. Okay, thank you. I have a question for staff. We're asking the Hyatt to contribute just $10,000 for the video system. Can you explain the system to me? Is this something that we just record and refer back to later on? Is it something that people are going to monitor every day? What are we getting out of this?
So it's not a video system? We have a video detection at that intersection, but we don't have it pointing in that direction.
Okay.
And so as we restripe the streets, we need to redo the traffic loops, and we're going towards video detection. They're better for sensing bicyclists.
So it will be active and useful the minute we install it?
It'll be active, it'll be added to the system we already have in place.
Perfect.
And that would be in-
Your system. They just pay a one-
They'll, they'll pay for the city to install it, as opposed to having a contractor do it and probably costing more money.
And that would be in lieu of loop, loop detectors?
Correct.
Okay. Also, the conditions of approval call for 28 bicycle spaces, and I'm only counting like 20. Can you kind of tell me what, what is the actual count of bike spaces?
Can you respond?
We had designed-
You need to use the microphone, please.
The condition of approval came out after we'd submitted with the code required 10 and 10. But we, we're not fighting that condition. We'll go up to 14 and 14, no problem.
Okay. And that's one thing that was also mentioned, is the fact that the long-term parking for employees wasn't secure and in adequate places. A biker, where it is, where we discussed earlier, over in that southeast corner, I think is, is fine, because it is protected, it's going to be covered from the building, correct? And I think if you just put a gate in there that locks it off to the public, where, you know, the employees have some kind of secure access to that, I think that would mitigate any of those problems. And as a biker myself, I'd feel comfortable putting my bike there as long as it was locked and secured.
So secure the long-term bike parking?
Right, the employee area, yeah.
Place that in the low, in the southeast corner.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
Got it.
Then I have comments. Let's see. Look at these streetlights. And speaking of the, the walkway, the sidewalk from Bay Street to Schelmund on the north side of the street, I feel that because, as is discussed, is a direct link to the transportation source, the, the bus routes and et cetera, and then going to the restaurant scenario, I do believe that we do have a, a good case to request that they put in the sidewalk. I don't feel that it's, it's for the onus that we tell them they have to plant the trees, the landscape, and the, and the city lighting. I think that should be impart onto the person that develops that site. I see that we do need to make that a safe crossing for people coming from the hotel, but that's not their site. And I understand, as you explained later, you know, but they're doing a lot on their site and improvements, and I think if they just provide a safe passing for their people, I think whoever develops that site needs to develop, just like they're putting in the street trees, that site needs to put in the street trees. And I think, again, on the sidewalk, where we're talking the pinch point, that's Madison Marquette's property. This city and this planning commission approved that pinch point, and those were errors that we made as a city, and I don't think the responsibility is theirs to fix our mistakes. If they're willing to move the light pole, I think that's great. But I think, like you said, with the storm draters there and the vault underground, that's going to be an expensive project, and it's really not their fault. It's not their onus to repair our past mistakes. So I wouldn't really support making them to, to fix that particular point. And for the, the conditions of approval on transit for TDM, I would like to see that the hotel offer their employees AC Transit EZ passes. That's a pass system that AC Transit has, that's a very low cost. You buy them in bulk and then give them to your employees. So I'd like to see that put into there. And I think for now, that's all I have.
I had a quick staff question about the monitoring that is in the staff report. How would that work? I was kind of curious about that myself. I know that-
Well, we were just wondering that ourselves, and I was consulting with the Public Works Director. He's fine with deleting that condition.
Okay. Yeah, I was like, I kind of couldn't figure that out, too. Okay, I agree with much of what you said, and I, I think that the, adding the, the green, like I said, would be, on the parking strips, would be a condition of approval I'd like to add. And I was wondering, on the Farron Pierce figure 10, picture, there was a lot of recommendations. Are they all included?
Yes.
Okay.
They're all included with the Public Works Director and the Planning Director having some leeway if adjustments need to be made.
Okay.
And that's in the condition of approval.
Okay. Well, I really appreciate the redesign. I think you've done a good job in simplifying things and bringing it more slightly into the urban feel, and I love the glass being moved to the corner. I think that's really great. And I, I think that concentrating, you know, considering that it's a very highly pedestrian-oriented project, connected to another highly pedestrian-oriented project, as well as near transit and bike paths, et cetera, connectivity is really crucial, and I think Mira made a very good point about that, that it is, it is all of our responsibilities. So maybe we could split the difference with the city, and, you know, that maybe there's some kind of compromise that could be made for that south side of Christie because it was, it was a past mistake. And at the same time, it is unacceptable, as it remains, and I don't think that the, just moving the light is the solution. It's, it's not enough. So, what else did I want to say? And not to mention that it is, there's this PUD where there has to be, I don't really know who's going to pay for it, maybe Madison Marquette needs to pay for it. It's, but that's part of the PUD, is that this whole site work for all people involved. And I think, oh, and I wasn't sure about the wall for the railroad. I was confused about what was going to happen in terms of, you know, there's this continuity, I guess, that we're trying to achieve with the wrought iron fence, but a planted, what's, I'm not sure what's more important, so I'm kind of on the fence with that, because it is, I'd much rather see plants, but I guess one could plant vines on the fence. That would mitigate the noise.
Well, the concept, the concept was to provide a, kind of a unified look. The city, over the years, has been trying to protect the railroad tracks from people just, you know, running across and- just, you know, running across and getting hit by a train or something. And so, as developments have occurred along the tracks over the last couple of decades, the city has required that a wrought iron fence be built. I don't know if they're all identical, but if you look up and down the tracks, you'll see behind IKEA, and behind Bay Street, and at the Public Market, and adjacent to the Amtrak station, the same wrought iron fence is all there along the railroad tracks. And so we just thought it would be appropriate to continue that in this location. I guess I would say that as long as it's attractive and it provides the same level of safety, I don't know that it necessarily has to be identical to all those other wrought iron fences. So I would defer to the commission as to what you think is appropriate there.
Well, I don't really...
I would also say, though, that I'm not sure how much noise attenuation it's gonna be. Concrete is what you use for...
Parked there.
Well, right. Concrete is what you use for sound walls next to freeways. They're typically taller, and I'm not sure that a low concrete wall like this is gonna help much from the rail noise for these six-story hotel, but...
Well, living 30 floors up, it doesn't matter. You hear that train no matter what. It's not gonna matter.
It might actually provide a blank canvas for some local underground artists.
There's that. Yes, there's that, too.
That is true. One thing I wanted to mention before I forget is, I did have a meeting with the developers on March 24th, and I did exchange an email with the ones to get the employee count for the building. I forgot to mention that.
Thank you. And actually, you've reminded me, we would appreciate if any commissioners have met with the applicant. You should state that at some point.
I have not met with the applicant. So I also agree with the AC Transit condition, and it seems like a no-brainer to just put a locked, secure for the bike parking. And I think that's about all I have to say at this point, and I appreciate all the work you've done to move it forward, so.
All right. So I will disclose that I did meet with Conrad Garner and Jeff Sears to review changes that have been made to the plan since we last reviewed it. I, yeah, I would sort of echo Commissioner Kumali's comments. I agree. I think most of the changes that have been made are good ones and really improve the project. I'm still, I mean, I'm still a little disappointed just in the type of the project. I'm disappointed that this isn't the hotel that was envisioned, you know, in the Bay Street, PDP or the EIR. You know, I wish it was that type of hotel. I wish it was taller. I wish it was a lot of things. But it's not, so I, you know, that said, I do appreciate the changes that have been made, and I think it is a much stronger project. I have one question for staff, which is to sort of follow up on the monitoring condition that you said you were agreeable to now striking out. But I was curious what the intent of that condition was.
I would ask Catherine Tellez to respond to that. It was the recommendation came out of the Farron Pierce report.
Yes, that came about because when we were looking at the operations of Bay Street and Christie, we did a lot of different iterations with, you know, testing different levels of pedestrian volumes across the street there, since it's somewhat uncertain, you know, how those levels might flow throughout the day. So the thought was, well, instead of making changes now, not really knowing exactly how many pedestrians might be conflicting with vehicles, it was, well, let's just take a look and see how the pedestrians might flow through there and see if we need to make some changes. Our analysis showed that having it be an always stop could cause some vehicles to back up to Shellmount. Putting in a signal at this time might be a little bit premature and cause some other issues. So that's why we thought, well, let's just wait and see, and plus, there's the retail pad, and then potential for development at Site B. So we didn't want to make any recommendations now that could preclude some other changes going on in the future that might be more beneficial for everyone.
Okay, but it was envisioned that future projects might make those improvements? This was just sort of a study to find out what improvements might be necessary?
Correct. Yeah.
Okay.
You know, and perhaps doing additional pedestrian enhancements to make sure that, you know, the pedestrians and the vehicles, we could minimize the conflicts.
Okay, so if, I'm just, I'm trying to, in my head, kind of fashion a condition of approval that gets the applicant the certainty that they wanted, and, you know, still gets us some data out of this. So the applicant would fund a pedestrian access and safety study at some point in the future? Is that kind of what was envisioned, or...
Potentially, but I can also see their perspective of, you know, not, there's no certainty, or, you know, there's a lot of uncertainty as to what that study might show, and then what might be a required solution.
Would that come out of the Site B development?
Potentially, yeah.
That would be the biggest traffic generator, I would think.
Or also, it could come out of the retail pad. When the retail pad in front of the hotel develops, probably some further pedestrian and traffic studies will be needed at that point. Hopefully, that won't be too far in the future.
Okay, thanks. So that said, I would like to propose two conditions of approval, or, well, one, one and a half, really. So one, one condition of approval that I would like to propose is that the three sets of double doors that lead into the lobby area from the sidewalk, that all three of those would remain unlocked and functional, at least during the business hours of the Bay Street retail. That's something that is very important to me. I've quickly gotten fed up with projects and buildings providing doors that don't function, really. So anyway, so I would propose that condition of approval. And then also, I was trying to sort of suss out whether I had support for this, but I would prefer to see the IPE wood as the treatment along the podium sealed, of course. It seemed like, it seemed to me like Commissioner Tan was maybe saying that if you sealed it properly, that it had a, that it would wear well and look good for a long period of time. So if that's the case, I would favor that. So I think that concludes me. Comments?
Did you say you had three conditions? Or just two?
No, it's just two. So...
Could I clarify? The three sets of double doors. Okay, you're referring to the two out to the patio and the one leading over towards Christie Avenue?
Correct. Which would do, I guess I'll just add it, it would do two things. It would, I think it's just good practice, and also, it would shorten the distance from the parking, the parking structure to the building entrance.
Did they say that?
No.
Maybe we could ask the applicant what their intent is of those doors. That's fine.
Right now, I think the report says that there's only going to be card key access to all the entrances, so...
Is that why you, is that why you were proposing that they remain open?
Yeah.
Right.
I'm sorry.
Well, but these are doors into the lobby. They wouldn't require card key access, would they?
For night, overnight.
Yeah, that's how it's stated.
At some point, the whole hotel locks down, and you'd have to have a key to get in.
Oh.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so you wanted to...
I'm proposing that during normal business hours...
That'd be the same as normal Bay Street business hours.
Right, correct.
That's fine.
Okay, so this is during...
I have one more little thing I want to say. I'm really glad to hear that you're doing the motorcycle parking spaces, because as far as I know, unless it's changed recently, you cannot park a motorcycle next door in the parking structure. I don't know if that's changed, but I found that out the hard way about a year and a half ago. Anyway, so that'll be a nice amenity.
Well, I agree with Stephen that it's unfair burden on the developer to have to replace the narrow sidewalk on the south side, and that they have offered to move the light pole, which is right in the middle of that narrow thing. But that wasn't, you know, that was approved by the city the way it was built. And I'm furthermore worried about widening that sidewalk because we're restricting the traffic there. Christie is going to be narrowed to get the bike lane in on the west side, and there's special turning ramps for, I mean, turning lanes for bicycles. It's getting very tight in there, and I don't think we should widen that sidewalk. I'm in favor of keeping this silver edge on the podium, because it also matches the silver edge on the sign above it, the next floor up that says Hyatt.
I think he's talking more about the lower ones. He's not, I don't think Commissioner Moss is...
I think the two can match, yeah.
Well, I think Commissioner Moss is talking about the red ones, the ones that look like wood, more towards...
Oh, far over.
Yeah, yeah. Am I correct, Commissioner Moss, that that's, are you talking about the silver ones or the ones that look like wood?
No, the ones that look like wood.
The ones that look like wood, yeah.
Yeah, correct.
He doesn't want changes to silver ones.
Yes, he does.
No, no, I don't. No, just this.
Underneath, I'm sorry.
Okay, fair enough. I'd go along with that. I think the developer's done a great job of meeting all the conditions. It's changed enormously from where we started. I did meet with them at the very beginning, but not since a number of study sessions and community meetings. I certainly hope it goes ahead.
Okay. I agree that the project really has come a long way in terms of the materials. I remember at the last meeting, kind of rattling off the number of different materials that you were trying to incorporate at that time, and so I'm really pleased to see that you've simplified the design and reduced that down. And not only that, but the color scheme is more in keeping with the neighboring surroundings. So I see an improvement there. It ties more into Bay Street. I did have a concern about the south-facing sign. That sign, I don't, because you can't see it from Bay Street, I don't really see the purpose of having that sign there, especially if it's just going to shine into the residential. I think it would be better for the north sign to be illuminated so that you could see that from the Powell Street overpass, and that would be more good usage of your advertising dollars. So I'd like for you to consider making that change. The sidewalk improvements, I'm really pleased to see that you're on board with taking care of that. I've, too, experienced a similar experience, working overseas, where you'd have these great projects, but there would be no sidewalks between them, and it was really difficult to get from one building to the next. Literally, the sidewalk would just disappear. The elevator lobbies, I kind of, I like the idea that you're letting more light into the building via that location, or by changing that to glass, but the view from there is facing the tracks, and I don't think the view is very pleasing. So if there's a way to incorporate light and maybe pick a slightly different finish of your glass, I don't think what you're seeing, people aren't gonna really like what they're seeing from that side.
I think you're also looking towards the hills.
Yeah. It's got the green hills. It's a pretty nice view.
Okay, well, I got some pushback. Well, let's talk about it. Yeah, that's true. There are views, view of the hills.
Honestly, as a claustrophobe, I'd rather have a view than no view at all. Whether it's tracks or some, but that's just personal opinion. It's just my personal opinion.
Yeah, yeah, no, I'm glad that you pointed that out, that there is the view of the hills. But the other thing I wanted to mention, again, on the view, though, is the low roof. And the low roof, I'm not so sure about that checkerboard thing that's going on, and there was a suggestion during the study session to make that a green roof. So people, hopefully, they'll be looking at the hills and not looking at that low roof, because I think it can be, no matter how you design that area, I don't know, it's gonna be kind of tricky to really pull it off. But at the same time, I recognize that if you have a green roof there, that if it's not maintained properly, you're gonna see something that may not look too good. And most of the green roofs in this area, you're never seeing from above. You're kind of seeing them from standing on the ground, and you really don't know unless you go up to Cal Academy, what, you know, what the foliage is looking like and the condition that it's in. It can be really tricky to manage, so, I don't know. I think that covered it. I think that the project has come a long way. I think with regard to the pinch point, yeah, that one, I don't know that I agree that that should be a condition of approval for the project. I'm kind of not really agreeing that that burden should be placed upon the project. As far as the conditions of approval that Commissioner Moss mentioned, the unlocked doors, I think that's really important. So I would definitely support that. And the IPE, I don't have a preference IPE over Swiss Pearl, but you're right, in that that's what I was trying to say. If you seal it, it really does, can be a really wonderful product to look at, and we have examples that are lasting examples. So that's all I have.
I did speak with the developer on the phone. I understand the desire to move this through, and they have come a long way with the design, but I feel like it's still a step away from really recognizing its full potential. I can't help but look at the corner treatment and feel like the building would be a lot more attractive without the wedge. And I understand that the wedge is part of the branding, but I feel like it could be articulated better. I don't know if it was a little lower, if it had an overhang, or wasn't a corner wedge, but a wedge just in one direction, similar to the one that was there before in the previous design, but at the corner. But something about this just, to me, reads Office Park or Hotel, or Hotel at the, near the airport, kind of feel. I think some of it has to do with the glazing. It's hard to tell. Some of the renderings make the glazing look like it's a little bit more transparent, possibly with a greenish hue to it, and others make it look like it's tinted pretty dark and very reflective. I liked the way that the louvers were treated previously, where they were budding up against each other. I feel like the way that they're treated now makes them look more like shutters, which seems a little out of place. I do like the idea of the fence in the rear being the wrought iron fence. I don't feel like a CMU wall is going to do anything sound-wise, and it's just gonna create safety issues with people being able to hide behind it and become a good canvas for graffiti. I would like to see the end of Bay Street treated in a temporary fashion with some landscaping until Bay Street continues through Site B. I agree with condition of approval to continue, I don't remember which it is, one or two, to continue the sidewalk through over to Shellmount. I would like, and maybe it's a question for staff, if we don't make it a condition of approval for them to address the pinch point, how else can we address it? Because it is, I mean, I probably walk that way, you know, maybe once a month, and people run into each other, it's, people have to stop to let other people walk through there. It's definitely too narrow to, you know, to encourage any kind of pedestrian traffic, and that is the key pedestrian path. People, like it or not, will park in Trader Joe's parking lot, walk that way, or vice versa. And so if it's not a condition of approval for this project, and I understand why it maybe shouldn't be, I still feel like it needs to get addressed somehow.
Well, to Chair Cardoza's point about the traffic, I believe that Farron Pierce has included in their study a diagram that shows how that sidewalk could be widened and still accommodate sufficient travel lanes, including a new bike lane in the roadway. So I don't think that should be a problem. But a couple of suggestions have been made, both involving Madison Marquette. One would be to put it as a condition on the eventual buildout of the retail pad across the street, and the other is to make it a condition of the relocation of the easement subdivision map that will be coming before you in the next month or two. So you could do it that way. I don't know if Madison Marquette would protest either of those.
Or it could be a condition of approval... Or it could be a condition of approval potentially for this project with the stipulation or understanding that the project that goes in the retail pad ends up contributing to half the cost eventually, you know, once it's built out.
It's a little difficult to put a condition on a future project.
What about putting it on the property owner?
Yeah, I mean, in reality, it's going to be part of the, this applicant's negotiation with Madison Marquette, so.
Well, no, it's definitely could be a condition of the, of the other unbuilt site there.
It could be a condition of this site, and it's not our problem. They, they have to deal with it with Madison Marquette.
But the developer is putting the sidewalk in on the north side of the street, which is not on his property.
Well, and that's the thing, and also, that will become, for those of us who come from across the bridges and come north or south on Christie or Shell Mound, we're going to turn right there where that new sidewalk is. Because I would rather cross more in the development than try to wait for that signal and then cross over to pinch point. So we are going to provide a better route once they provide that new sidewalk on the north side.
But if you're coming from, if you're coming from Trader Joe's.
Exactly, you're still going to have a problem.
Because you're not going to go across the street over.
Right, you're still going to have a problem.
I mean, after, after hearing that, I think I'm starting to lean towards making it a condition.
So how about a condition that they contribute some money to the eventual repair of that?
It's not going to happen.
Well, the problem is, it's not, if it were a city sidewalk, then, you know, the city could take the money and maybe try to get money from other developers or, or supplement it with general fund or whatever. But it's not a city sidewalk. It's not city property. It's private property. So I don't know how we do that. One thing, one point I would also like to make is it's possible that in the future, that other, that retail pad could also be sold to another developer, just as they're selling the hotel site to Ensemble. In which case, if in the future you made it a condition of the development of that retail pad, then we're going to have a similar argument about should they be doing it or should Madison be doing it? So I don't know. That's just sort of kicking the can down the road, I think.
And this was something we brought up in the study session. I mean, this is like very important, that this sidewalk work. So you've had lots of time to work it out with Madison Marquette, and it's not, it's, it's not a public sidewalk. I think we should definitely keep it in as a condition of approval, or it will not happen.
I, yeah.
I agree.
And, and then just a last point is that we're, you know, I think that the corner treatment on the ground floor level is a lot nicer. But then when I look at the floor plans, it, it calls that area behind there a café. But I've clarified with the applicant that no food's served in this area at all. The food's served on the exact opposite side of the floor. I just have a, you know, I understand the logistics of dealing with the kitchen, but basically, you know, can there be a coffee kiosk? Or, you know, is there going to be a bar? Is there, could there be a bar in that area? I mean, what, putting something in that area that will actually make that patio useful because I, I, you know, if I'm getting my food on the opposite side of the floor and I have to walk past the lobby and the front desk and everybody checking in just to get over to the café slash patio area, I think I'm unlikely to do it. And, and if we're trying to activate that corner and really engage Bay Street, I think that that's a key part of it. So there's just some elements to this that I feel, you know, I feel like it's 85% there, and just taking that additional step is worth another month to me, but maybe not to you. I don't know.
Well, the café could be served by a waiter. Clearly, those tables are going to have to be cleaned under any circumstance. Staff is going to have to pick up the stuff, so therefore waiter could take an order for people to deliver it.
Is this a wait, is this a restaurant that people wait? Is there a waitstaff or is this more of a cafeteria style?
I think it's the latter.
Yeah, that's what I thought. So I guess between the café, the glazing and, and treatment of the corner, the wedge, still feeling kind of Office Park-like, and the window treatment and the louvers slash shutter feel, just feel like a little bit of modification could take this to a step that we could all be proud about.
Well, then, would you vote no on it at this time?
I would, because I think it wouldn't take them that much to, to bring it to a level where I could vote yes.
Well.
Well, before, before you go to a vote, I just wanted to bring up, Gail brought up the thing that I don't think, Commissioner Tan did bring up the signage and the lighting. So the lighting on the front facades, the halo lighting behind the, is that going to be dimmable? Is it very bright? Because I think that and the gentleman that talked about the LED, having lived in a building where the art.com sign created much controversy for months and months, I think this is potential. I cannot see putting LED lights in those windows. I could see the people of Bay Street really having a problem with that. The fact that you see curtains in a hotel window, to me, doesn't seem odd. It seems really appropriate because if I'm changing in that room, I want to close the curtains. So I don't know why curtains in the window is a problem. But the signage and like Commissioner Tan said, is maybe not have the light, the shine down Bay Street and just illuminate the one. It would seem a little off balance. But I was wondering if maybe all three signs, this, these two and the one that you're not illuminating, if they could be all illuminated separately and then we could kind of run a trial with dimmers and then maybe turning them off altogether if some do cause a problem? Because I could see the people, the terraces, having a problem with the one on the other side illuminated, yeah, illuminated. So I don't know if you guys are willing to work on just putting them all in separate things, putting them on dimmers, and then kind of see how the community feels about them and change it?
Yeah, do it. Will you respond? We have talked to the signage company about how we could dim that, how to physically do that, and they're working with us on a solution. And naturally, they don't have a way to do it, but we can work with the wattage of the bulbs used and some timers and things like that.
And how about turning them off altogether if they become really offensive?
Are you just speaking to this one?
Correct. And if you decided to illuminate the one on the north side, which I don't know if you want or not, I think you would want it illuminated so you could advertise to that site as well, but.
Yeah, I think we would want one overhead sign illuminated at night, but the others would be open.
Yeah, okay, so we can make that a condition that we do.
Well, they are dimmable.
Well, separately.
Yeah, separately.
But they need to be able to be dimmed separately, like not on the same circuitry.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Yeah, they need to be on their own control.
We can do that.
We have a more or less standard condition that we inadvertently did not include this time, that signs be dimmable if, you know, complaints are received to the satisfaction of the planning director. And in this case, we could add that it's separate. Each sign is separately dimmable. So if you want to add that condition, we, we can do that.
And then a question I had on the back door, where there's the vestibule in the back door going to the parking lot, I think Farron Pierce had a problem with that clearing ADA compliance. And I was wondering, that second door that actually opens to the parking lot, is that actually needed? Could you just eliminate that and have the, only the interior one?
You're talking this, this door, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, correct. Could you eliminate that door that walks out onto the sidewalk and just leave it as open there and just have the one interior door?
We could.
Yeah, I think.
We don't need a vestibule. The weather conditions don't require a vestibule.
Exactly, yeah, so that would eliminate that pinch point for sidewalks.
Could set that in.
Is it cold here? Or hot?
Figure 10.
For the motorcycle parking, were you proposing to add that as a condition?
Well, it's on that page 10 or.
Well, I know it's in there, but it says, it says consider.
Well, does it? Well.
Figure 10 says consider.
The traffic report says all recommendations are, you know, they are recommendations, but the condition of approvals make it into conditions, subject to review by the planning and the Public Works Director. So if there are some things which are not workable, then they can, it's on their discretion.
So before we go into any of the conditions or vote on this, I would support, I would support the development. I would support changing the sidewalk with the pinch point if that was kind of a bone of contention, whether it's going to pass or not. I would support making that a condition that they change that, so long as the sidewalk on the north doesn't include landscaping, irrigation, and lights that they just put in the, in the sidewalk. I think that's a fair trade-off. And if they fix the pinch point, that wasn't their problem, they don't have to totally do a complete streetscape on the other side.
I think the Public Works Director has a problem with that.
That being?
Eliminating all those amenities on the sidewalk on the north side.
And that being?
That we don't want them eliminated.
They're sidewalks, though, aren't they? They're not city sidewalks.
The sidewalk on the north side, you know, with the landscaping, if you put the landscaping in later, then you're not going to have a sidewalk on that side of the street when that parcel redevelops. I'd like to get the landscaping in now with all the structural soil and the trees and the sidewalks so that it's there, and then when the parcel redevelops, you still have that connectivity while that project's under construction. They can work around that. And so it's better to get it now than to try to push that off later.
I understand that theme, but right now, we don't have a sidewalk. So, I mean, we've lived this long without a sidewalk. Why can't we use the one on the south side as well?
The point is, you're either not going to get street trees in the future, or they're not going to be planted in adequate conditions.
Wouldn't you make that whole condition when that parcel develops? Why would it be any different than that?
And if I could point out that the developer's already conceded to wanting to do that. So they've already offered to do it, so they're already okay with it, so.
But they also didn't want to do the correction at the pinch point. So I'm trying, they didn't want to do the correction at the pinch point, so I'm trying to find an even ground here.
Well, another option would be to make that correction of the pinch point a condition of approval on the easement relocation for Madison Marquette.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't support that.
That would be the simple.
I would support that.
And when is that?
Tentatively, we have it scheduled for your next meeting.
And it's their property in the first place. They should fix their problems.
Correct. So.
Well, they can fix it now.
Yeah.
With extra push from these folks.
Well, I mean, maybe a way to split this baby would be to require the full improvement of the north sidewalk, defer on the south sidewalk, and make that a condition of the easement.
I would support that.
I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution with the changes to the conditions of approval recommended by staff, the striking of the condition of approval regarding the traffic monitoring, and the two additional conditions of approval that I stated previously, one regarding the sealed E-Pay and the other regarding the operational doors during business hours.
Could you please clarify regarding the E-Pay condition? What exactly?
So it would be a substitution of material, the sealed E-Pay for the Swiss Pearl.
So wherever there is Swiss Pearl, it'll be E-Pay?
Correct.
So you're not striking the condition about the south sidewalk, then?
The pinch point? No, he's not.
Okay.
Well, I would move that we do strike that and put it into the condition for the.
Hang on, hang on a second. Procedurally, well, two things. First of all, your, your motion did not include modifying the condition that we have about the wrought iron fence. And I would like to state that actually staff would support that because after having discussed it with the Public Works Director, I think we both have concerns, similar concerns to what the commission expressed about both safety and the potential for tagging, which my department is responsible for abating on a continuing basis, so that's an issue.
I'm not, I'm not sure, I'd like there to be a wrought iron fence, so whatever.
No, the condition says that already, so your motion incorporates that. I just wanted to clarify that. But then the procedural point is that Commissioner Moss's motion has not been seconded. If and when it is seconded, then it would be appropriate for another commissioner to make a substitute motion if you want to have different conditions. If it's not seconded, then it's a moot point.
No second?
Well, somebody seconded it?
So I'd make an alternate motion that we go with Commissioner Moss's, but we remove the pinch point and make it a condition of the next round.
I would second that.
Is that clear, Charlie?
Yes. Well, yes, I mean.
Verify it.
You can't really make it a condition right now of the easement, but you're just, that's the direction to us to do.
I have a question. Can I make a substitute motion, or is that too?
Yeah, Commissioner Tan seconded that.
All right, so I'd like to.
Or you could make a friendly amendment if the maker of the motion will accept your amendment.
No.
And before you do that, the provision of AC transit passes that I believe Commissioner Keller and yourself.
Yes, thank you, I forgot about those, yes.
They need to be included as well.
Thank you, yes.
Well, that, that, okay.
And I still second that.
I'm going to make a condition approval for the AC transit pass, the secure bike parking, the parking strips. And I don't, I can live with the Swiss miss, whatever. Sorry, late.
Swiss coffee.
No, the Swiss.
Pearl.
Pearl.
Pearl, thank you. But I can't live with the sidewalk not getting done. And I am very concerned that it won't get done, so.
We have a second to that motion.
That would be a motion.
Well, yeah, so that's a substitute motion?
Did I miss, oh, plus, no, I'm sorry, plus the unlock, the keeping the doors unlocked.
Thank you.
Was there another one besides, no, during business hours. Absolutely, that makes sense.
I would second that motion if you would accept a friendly amendment about the E-Pay, the sealed E-Pay.
Okay.
All right.
We have two motions.
So the sidewalk on the south side is in, then?
Can we get a sense from you guys how you feel about that?
Well, I was going to ask if I could speak again, because we, you know, on the south side, what we were trying to highlight in the presentation today is that we do recognize that there's a condition that's not ideal. What we're arguing against is, does it really take moving that entire length of sidewalk, three feet?
Yes.
Or does it take removing the street lamp and moving that into a different location? I mean, that would be an alternate way to phrase the condition and fix the pinch, because the building, between the building and the sidewalk, I just walked it two hours ago, meets code, I would imagine. And it's pinched out of comfort with the street lamp.
Just to add to that, I'm Michael Moss, was with Ensemble. If you could modify it, again, we do the full improvements on the north side. We would do the street lamp relocation, which would clearly solve some of the problem, and you would still have the opportunity to condition the full additional sidewalk widening on a future application from Madison Marquette for the easement, which is pending. So you would get at a minimum where the real pinch point is the street light moved and the other full improvements and still have an opportunity. We came in, you know, rescinding our objection to the, all the north side improvements, which we don't think we should burden with, and to have both sides now thrown at this project is a lot.
So, so let me amend my conditions. And I would go with the E-Pay. I would, you know, I don't care either way about that. I, it's half the dozen the other. And I would say.
Did I get seconded yet?
No, yes, you did, you did.
So I'm doing an alternate.
Are you, are you, okay, thanks.
This would be a friendly amendment. To this one, that would change it to the E-Pay and.
Wait, before, before you, before you articulate that, right. So we currently have a motion by Commissioner Kummerly, seconded by Commissioner Moss. So we have a motion and a second. Which was a substitute motion, right?
That was a substitute motion to the original motion by Commissioner Keller, seconded by Commissioner Tan.
Sure. Now, so Commissioner Keller is now proposing a friendly amendment to Commissioner Kummerly's motion, is that right?
You're on track. So I'm rescinding mine.
Of the original, oh, you're rescinding your motion?
Right, I'm going to put a friendly amendment onto hers.
Okay. Where's Robert's rules of order? I guess that's okay.
If it's not, then if it's not, we can leave it out there, and I'm still going to put a friendly amendment onto Commissioner Kummerly's.
Well, okay, because you vote on the substitute motion before you vote on the original motion. So if you want to amend the substitute motion and Commissioner Kummerly is amenable to that, I guess that's okay.
Okay, so.
So can you repeat what the substitute motion includes?
Yes, so we're doing all the conditions, the E-Pay, the bus passes, the secure bike parking. We're doing the north sidewalk on the north side in complete entirety. And the other thing we're doing is we're going to ask them to move the light pole and nothing else on the south side sidewalk.
And it's clear that everyone else feels differently from myself regarding the design and pushing it. So I'd like to offer a friendly amendment, then, that the, the glazing at the corner and the wedge be, I'm not quite sure how to word it, but basically that it appear similar to A4.12 in its transmissivity and tint, both the glazing and the spandau panels.
What's this?
What does that mean?
A4.2?
I would agree to that.
Can you state it again?
That makes sense, lighten it up.
I'm not quite, I mean, without knowing the exact transmissivity, et cetera, of this, I'd like to offer a friendly amendment that the, the glazing at the corner volume match in transmissivity and color, the rendering on A4.12.
So, more towards a green?
Yes, along with the spandrel panels.
Translucency also.
And the more transparent.
I think that's good.
Well, I think that would, if it becomes transparent, it destroys the image of the corner being a blue monument. It'd be a mishmash, because you'd look into bedrooms, and you'd look into lobbies.
Well, you want to look in the lobby, and I think that colored glass fits more with some of the buildings that are on Hollis Street, such as 58, 55, the Emeryville Station East. So, I mean, it's not uncharacteristic of our city to do that. And I think if that's going to, may either make this, make or break this, I think I would go along with it.
If, if I may, as the person who has to implement this condition, I'm not 100% clear what this condition entails, because this is a rendering.
Yeah.
And, they will show me actual samples when they get put. I'm not sure whether it's going to be exactly this.
I know.
So, if you can elaborate it in something else, so that I can faithfully implement what you're trying.
Yeah, I guess that it has a light bluish tint, and that it is more transparent than reflective, and that the spandrel panels are also of a light bluish tint.
So, it'd be the same glass for both of them, right?
Yeah. That, I mean, the spandrel panels might be more opaque.
Because you don't want to see the cement floors.
I just feel like with the, all the other windows are going to be clear glass, and then this one volume, if it's too reflective, or too just silver-looking, I think it's going to read too Office Park-like, and...
Well, it's supposed to, because it's supposed to be a monument. It's not supposed to look like the other one.
I think, I think that's what, there's nothing else about this as monumental, and making it too monumental makes it feel cheeky.
Well, six stories tall, and it has the wings on the top of it.
There's skyscrapers in San Francisco that have this treatment.
Looks like a dumb apartment building.
There's skyscrapers in San Francisco that have that treatment that look monumental.
Sounds like, yeah, I think we want to hear if you would be amenable to that.
Yes, yes. I mean, what we wanted was it to be different than the room windows. So, a light blue tint with some transparency, you will still get the monument feel, but you will get some of the transparency. We're fine with that, if that's a compromise, that's acceptable.
Move the light.
As just, as just described by Commissioner Gunkel.
And if that's his only condition on this, I would second that.
Wait, you're seconding a friendly amendment?
That's an amendment.
Oh, that's an amendment to Commissioner Coomerly's.
If she's up and do it. I see. Agree to both of those amendments? Like, so, so now Commissioner Gunkel has asked...
So, I agree to Commissioner Gunkel's amendment, and I guess I need to take, maybe, could I, is it possible to take a straw poll on the, or is it too late?
Take a straw poll on the one issue.
Or should we get a clear thing on what the direction is?
You can take a straw poll, on what?
You mean what the, what the motion is?
The sidewalk on the south side.
You can take a straw vote if you want.
So, in terms of having the condition of approval be that the sidewalk be made three feet wider now, versus move the light pole and bring it up when the easement gets brought before us?
And in both cases, they would be doing the entire north sidewalk.
Right.
The full treatment.
I think the applicant would...
We've just done a sidebar with Madison Marquette, and in the interest of making everybody happy, we would agree to do both sidewalks, and we will split the cost.
That's great.
Okay, it's wonderful. Thank you.
So, then the condition would be just the way they are with no change. Thank you.
See, we hanged it out long enough that it finally dried.
Is that how we should do this?
You just wear them down.
So, can you read, so can you guys read us back what you have as our, if you can figure it out?
Well, okay, so, I, I believe we are working off of Commissioner Coomerly's substitute motion still, which included, you've got the AC transit passes, parking strips, sidewalk on the south side and north side, which is now moot, Commissioner Gunkel's amendment about the glass, of course, all the staff-recommended changes to the conditions. Let's see.
Secured parking.
Secure bicycle parking.
It's already in there.
It's already in there? Okay.
And the, and the doors to remain open during Bay Street business hours.
I'm just struggling to figure out what the difference is between all these different versions of the, of the motion that have been made. So, okay, so with Commissioner Moss's condition about the doors...
And the EPE.
And the EPE. And, oh, I didn't hear this, but did you want to include the condition about the signs to be dimmable separately?
Oh, definitely, yes.
Okay.
Separate dimmable.
Eliminate the second door in the back.
Correct.
Right?
Iron fence, wrought iron fencing?
That's already in the conditions. That, we, did we say that? I thought I said that. Elimination of the monitoring. So, we've got Commissioner Moss's changes, we've got changes recommended by staff, we've got the elimination of the monitoring, we've got the signs dimmable separately, AC transit passes, parking strips. I'm unclear what that is. What are the, what are parking strips?
The parking strips as shown in all of the, the planted parking strips as shown in the...
Elevations.
Elevations. We need to put those back in.
Yeah. So, it would be along Bay Street?
Yes, yes, I understand.
Between the sidewalk and the street.
Okay. Neither knows what you're talking about, so...
Okay.
That's all that counts. That's all that matters.
I, I guess those are it, right?
Yes.
Anybody think we're missing anything? This toy chest?
I don't think so.
Got it all?
We have it all.
Okay.
Okay, we can always go back and look at the tape if we think we missed anything. So, the, so the vote now is on the substitute motion by Commissioner Coomerly, and, well, wait, did you withdraw your motion?
Mm-hmm, yes.
So, it's not a substitute motion anymore?
It's, it's, it's...
Whatever will move this forward. If you wanted a substitute, make it a substitute.
It is Commissioner Coomerly's motion, which was seconded by Commissioner Moss.
Thank you. Right. Okay. Are we ready to vote?
I just had one other question. No, it just came to mind. Is, is our city council, our, our council, our legal council, okay with all the staff rebuttals to the unit letter? Have we met all the obligations of the FDP, the PDB, and the PUD?
Yes, yes.
So, we are no, no legal waters of that? That's all resolved?
I, I, yes.
Okay.
Short answer to your question.
Okay, vote quick. Commissioner Gunkel?
Yay.
Commissioner Keller?
Yes.
Commissioner Coomerly?
Aye.
Commissioner Tan?
Aye.
Vice Chair Moss?
Aye.
Chair Cardoza?
Aye.
Six ayes, the application is approved. This decision may be appealed to the city council within 15 days.
Next item on the agenda.